All right, hello everybody. My name is Liz and I'm the librarian at the Belgrade Community Library. Welcome to tonight's event. Thank you for attending this candidate forum and voter information session. Please remember to silence your cell phones and also that there is a restroom and emergency exit towards the back. This forum is for information only and does not endorse or promote any vote for or against candidates or measures on the upcoming ballot. I would like to extend a special thanks to our sponsors of the candidate forum series, the Bozeman League of Women Voters, the Americans Association of University Women, Bozeman Business and Professional Women, the Bozeman Public Library, and the Belgrade Community Library Foundation. Our candidates that will hear from today are running for the Belgrade School Board. The time allotted for hearing from these candidates will run from 6:00 to 7:30. Jane Arndson Schumacher with the League of Women Voters will be our moderator tonight. Immediately following this candidate forum, barring a five-minute intermission while we reset, we'll hear an informational presentation about the Belgrade School Board. We have the superintendent here with us tonight. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on KGBM 95.9, Gallatin Valley Community Radio, and it will also be available to be listened to as a podcast on their website. We'll also upload this event to the library's YouTube page barring any technical difficulties. The League of Women Voters also has a table to help register votes and keep you informed, so please stop by after the event or during the intermission. Ballots for this election have been mailed out on April 19th and can be returned by mail or in person, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday at the county election office, and they can also be dropped off at the Belgrade School Board, no, Belgrade School District Administration Office. Ballots are due and must be received by 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 7th. Thank you everyone for being here and for giving the public the opportunity to ask questions. So we will go ahead and get started with the candidate forum while by the intermission and then the bond information session. So I will turn it over to our moderators. Thank you.
Thank you to the Belgrade Library. They do a lot of the work. I'd say Pat, who's not here tonight, but Pat and you guys are the ones that do all the work. I just show up, so thank you so much. As she said, my name is Jane Arndson Schumacher. I live down the block here in Belgrade, and I will be moderating, the moderator for tonight's forum. I want to just mention a couple of things before we actually start the forum. The League of Women Voters has an online guide. It's called Voter 111, where you can see how the candidates responded to questions we asked. And we just...
411.
Did I say 911?
No, you said 111.
Oh, 411. The responses, questions we asked and give some background, including the school board candidates. And so it's a new website. Try it because it'll give you all the candidates in the primaries, candidates in the fall, and I think it's really helpful to kind of see what they have to say. So go to forum, vote, no, V-O-T-E, 411.org, and that's how you will locate it. You have to put in your physical address because it's a statewide website. So you don't want to get everything for every candidate in the state. So if you put your address, it's going to go directly to your precinct and your candidates, statewide information. And for the school board, obviously, it's going to go to this school district, not all school districts. We're providing this service to all school districts. Please let your friends and family members that live in other school districts know about 411. Hopefully it's helpful. And I'd like to just mention, we don't do forms for the primaries. That's sort of by the parties themselves, but there will be a ballot issue. So I will take a minute to mention that since, like I say, we won't have a forum and I can mention that, that'll be the issue. It'll be on the June 4th primary election ballot. So you will be asked whether or not you would like to review your form of government. When we did the Montana Constitution, what was it, '72, '73? You guys remember?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. They required that every 10 years we do a review of our local governments. So that is municipal, the city one and the county. And so you will see an issue where you could do just in Belgrade or Belgrade and the county. And I know the county especially is interested in getting some feedback on the system. There are some offices that are elected rather than appointed, and that's one of the, I'm not just giving an example of what could come up. You can get, and so I bring it up because there is a fee for a study. You are required to do the study. There will be a cost to that study, which will be on the ballot. And that's what's on the ballot is are you willing to do the cost for a study? We haven't done one. Does anybody know how long since February it's been one? I think it's at least 20 years. We are not required to do it, but some issues have come up that you may want to comment on that particular ballot issue, on whether or not we should do a local government review. And like I say, either the city or the county or both. So Pat, I don't know if you want to pass these out, but it's a little...
We gave this opinion.
Oh, you guys got them. Okay. And so the language that will be on the ballot is on this forum. And so please consider and be kind of, it's just hard to go in there and then know what they're talking about. So just know what they're asking and what that means. So hopefully that's the information. Okay. So tonight, we're going to start with the school board candidates, but we actually do have a presentation with the school board. It's not an election, but it is a bond issue. And so we asked them to come here and speak to the bond issue and answer any questions you may have as you decide how do you want to vote on that. So the school board has two categories of positions. It's the high school and the elementary school. They have more than two positions, but two types. So the first one is the elementary.
No. What they have is a one-year slot that's available and two three-year slots.
And it's all K-12.
It's K-12.
Oh, see, I missed others. You guys have...
Even though we have an elementary district.
So the information they sent me was the elementary position. There are two positions opening three candidates. The three candidates are Rocky Smith, Frank Stock, and Walter Durze. Did I say that right, Durze?
Yes.
Walter is the candidate that came tonight, so he will be responding to your questions. We do not have the other two candidates attending tonight. And then the other half is the high school physicians. There's one physician who's two candidates. I'm telling you what they sent me from that district. We got it from there. We have two candidates that are running for that position. Is that incorrect? It's a one-year position. The elementary is two. So it's Mary Ellen Millcuttero and Bill Fraser are the two candidates for the one-year position. Any questions before I move on because I can obviously screw that up? All right. For, I'm going to go over, I need to go over the format and the rules. So I will start with the format. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and explain their qualifications and why they'd like to be elected, what they will bring to the school board. Each candidate will have two minutes also to answer one question that has been provided by the League of Women Voters in advance. I will then open the floor to questions from the floor, from the audience. You may ask your questions. Questions may be directed at one or more candidate. You could direct it to just one candidate, but even though you could direct them, they may, any candidate could take that opportunity and respond. Once the question, the individual that you directed it to, all other candidates will actually have an opportunity to respond to that question. Answers by the candidates will be limited to one minute. Sometimes you cannot answer that question in one minute, and so we have cheated in the past, but that is sort of the guideline we use is one minute. Each candidate will have two minutes at the end for a closing statement. Okay, rules. The moderator will intervene if questions or answers are repetitive. If we start going over and over, we're going to interrupt it and be done. Or courtesy is not shown. We need to treat our candidates and each other in the audience with courtesy and respect. And so you may be interrupted. We do have a timer tonight, Linda Gable. She will be our timer and help me, and she'll let the candidates know when they have one minute remaining of their term, whether they have 30 seconds, and when their time is up. Candidates are asked to finish very promptly, if possible, when your time is up. The moderator will ask members of the audience to post questions without comments or editorializing. One thing to remember is these forums are set up for you to hear who they are and how you want to vote. I truly believe you should be talking to your school board members, your candidates, and sharing your concern, but that is not the function of the forum tonight. We want to have plenty of time to hear from them. If a candidate is mentioned by name or referred to in some answer by one of the other candidates, they also will have a chance to respond to their opponent with equal time. If questions from the audience can be answered yes or no, the candidates are not bound by that. They will have an opportunity to qualify or explain their answer. The forum is meant to help voters become familiar with your candidates, not to force candidates to select answers which they are uncomfortable, because their answer may be yes or no, but they want to explain that answer, and we will allow them to do that. Again, the moderator will intervene if questions or answers are repetitive or if courtesy is not shown. Any questions from the candidates as we continue forward? All right, let's introduce them. We kind of already did, but Walter, Mary Ellen, and...
Bill.
Thank you. Bill Fraser. All right, let's start. So the question that was submitted by the League of Women Voters are, is what do you see as the biggest issues?
Jane.
Yeah, they have to introduce themselves first. Then they've got an opening statement.
No. Do we do that?
Yeah, two minutes.
Well, we have an opening statement with two minutes.
All right, give him his two minutes.
I'm going to warn you, this is a mistake, giving me two minutes of opening to talk randomly because...
That's why we have a timer.
You should better throw those. My name is Walter Durze. I live here in the valley. I have since 2008, originally from Deer Lodge area. I moved over here looking for opportunity back then. I worked in this area, been a member of the community. I've had kids that have been in all aspects of Belgrade schools. I've got one that's not quite a kindergartner yet, and I've got four that are out of high school. So, you know, so far we're doing, I'm taking it as a win. They've all made it out. My wife works in Belgrade schools as a special needs para right now. She's actually looking at trying to step back, and Dee over here is hanging on to her by her ankles, but she's probably going to wind up staying on as I think of us attending. I'm running for school board because I want to help direct the schools as they move forward and expand. We've got a good problem to have here, which is growth versus, you know, a dying community. I am trying to prioritize, you know, working with other people, but my focuses are going to be student education and school safety. Just, you've got to have a safe place and then just focusing on actually educating the students. Right now, my frustration is that we're losing so many of our great educators because we don't have, we don't have the pay, the wages that are competitive in this valley, so. All right. Did I have two minutes?
Yeah, six seconds.
And we will move to Mary Ellen after the same, after her introduction.
Okay, my name is Mary Ellen Fitzgerald, and education has been my entire career. I'm a native Montanan. I started first grade in Belgrade. I graduated from Belgrade, and then I obtained my B.S. in education and my M.A. Master's in curriculum instruction at Montana State University, and my teaching career spanned 37 and a half years. I was in the trenches with all ages and many different subjects. After teaching high school for five years in Terry, Montana, I came back home and I was hired to teach at those from junior high, and it was a school well over 1,100, and it was seventh through ninth graders. And this turned into Chief Joseph Mills School, and we became Blue Ribbon School for grades six through eight. And then when Sacre de Realist Bill, I elected to go out to Sacre de Real. And I taught seventh grade English and social studies. And then instead of retiring from education, I decided to try the political arena. So I applied for a position of Gallatin County Superintendent of Schools, and I won. And being Gallatin County Superintendent of Schools gave me a background in school law, school finance, and issues facing education. I saw the problems in all of the districts, and every district, every board was having the same kind of problems. That experience in school relations and school law is the strongest aspect of my background and of my candidacy, and I consider that knowledge a very valuable asset for the board. After having been elected for three terms, I decided to retire in January 2015 after serving for 12 years in that position. And then upon retirement, I ran for the Belgrade School Board to offer my educational experience and to help the district give each child the best education possible. And I have been elected for three terms and was going to retire at the end of this year, and the one-year position came up, and I decided if the electors will keep me on, I'd like to do it for one more year.
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I'm welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. This is, this, some of my remarks may seem combative. I want to just put that out there. And the reason for that is I'm attempting something that has never been done in politics, in American history or world history for that matter, as far as I know. I also apologize for my voice. The pollen out there is wreaking havoc on it. I have great respect for these two candidates, particularly this one here sitting next to me. Having said all of that, very special night in American politics. For the first time in American history, you are witnessing a candidate, myself, who is willing to relinquish the power of decision and put that back into the hands of the constituent. We're going to do this...
You just ran down this.
We're going to do this with what is called referendum-based voting. Obviously, as a district, you're familiar with referendums. In an economy of words, what I'm going to do, what we are going to do, is poll the district, the district voters on issues, and I am going to in turn vote with the majority of the constituency, whenever possible. That's not always going to be possible. But as we go on tonight and you listen to these other candidates, and I'm not picking on these candidates, this is true of all politicians in America, they're going to try to convince us that through their education, through their life experiences, or through their years on the board, that they are more qualified in instances to make decisions than you are for yourselves or your family. This is absolutely not the case, and it's time to change politics in America.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Now, I can ask my question. So for each candidate, in this time, we'll start with Mary Ellen. But the question that we are asking them is, what do you see as the biggest issues that would be addressed by the school board, or at least should be addressed by the school board, in the next two years?
In the next few years or the next two years? Okay. So I think we all know the answer to this one, and that is growth, keeping up with what's happening in the area. We're seeing it all the time. We've all heard that within 10 years, Belgrade will be a town of 30,000, and we are the fastest-growing city in the state. So therefore, the biggest problem will be keeping up with the new look of Belgrade within the school district. The school board will need to be proactive, always proactive, and continue to plan ahead. And I'm currently taking a class with 150 other educators across the United States, and their biggest problem is that they are trying to figure out how to brief teachers and close buildings. So we are definitely facing the opposite here. So how do we build schools to house the rising enrollment and hire enough teachers to fill the needs? The second one is the high property values. We all got your new tax bill, so how can teachers afford to live here on the salary that we pay them? Lift costs of housing, apartments? How can teachers make it work? So two years ago, we had three homeless teachers in the community. We found places for them, but this may happen more and more, so the board will need to look up for a solution. How do we attract new teachers, and how do we keep the good professionals that we have? So that's the second one. The third one, how do we keep our students in school and prepare them for the future? Whatever that may look like, we don't know. How do we meet the need of all of our students, not just a few? We'll need to look at efficiency, and we're going to need to look at effectiveness of what we teach. Curriculum may not be the same. We may need to offer more life classes. We just don't know how much different it's going to be, so we have to work as a team with our very qualified administrators and staff and constantly confront this problem.
Okay, so same question. That was our candidate question, correct? Okay. So in my opinion, the biggest issues are twofold. They're persistent in the district. They've been a problem since I've been here. There's no end in sight for them. It's the influx of students into the schools and what we're going to do with them, right? Each kid needs a desk in a classroom if they're going to be successful. Also employing and retaining faculty and staff, especially with this housing crisis that we're facing in the valley. You can no longer drive a bus or be a hall monitor and afford to live here, and the math just doesn't work. But no matter what the issues are, they're the issues that we're having in Belgrade 44, at the state level, at the national level, we all have opinions and we all have skill sets. I'm talking to all of you on how to solve all of these problems, okay? So the question becomes, as a constituent, how do I get my elected officials to listen to me? Okay? And we all have that problem. What are we told? Call our office, right? Email your representative. Gross, I particularly hate that one because nothing ever happens. At best, if you're lucky, you might get a town hall. There's a whole lot of yelling and screaming, some people get kicked out, and that elected official goes and votes the way they were going to anyway, in most cases. What I'm going to do, what I'm attempting to do, is just give you all a conduit directly to my ear and streamline this process of town halls, emails, phone calls. Let's just do it correctly. And, oh, this is how the people want me to vote. Done. That's what I promised to do for all of you. I yield back.
Fifteen seconds. I don't know. If you need me to repeat the question, Walter.
The biggest issues, no, I actually, I think I can remember.
Perfect.
The biggest issues Belgrade's facing, starting with, and I don't disagree with Mary Ellen, their growth is going to be a challenge. One of the biggest challenges with that growth is going to be teacher pay and retention. And you're going to hear this is a common theme. We've got to get teacher pay, or we're going to lose them. I'm seeing, I'm seeing teachers leaving. It's going to happen. If you don't have a house and didn't buy a house by about 2018, as a teacher's salary, you're not going to be here. That means you probably were teaching for 10 years. It means you're 15 years into your career. And that's not going to happen. We've got to get competitive. Forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year in this valley, we all know, is essentially poverty level. It sounds insane. Five years ago, we would have thought it was a great living. It's not. Growth, we're going to have to manage the growth. The problem is when you start growing, it's real easy to say, hey, I want to go out and build all these buildings and make all this stuff. The problem is we've got to also look at the taxpayers that are being squeezed and balance that. We've got, you know, Montana Constitution does mandate that we do provide a public education, so, you know, that is constitutional mandate. I know there may be a libertarian in the audience that may feel otherwise, but take it up with the state. We have, we are obligated to do it, so how do we best put those taxpayer dollars into the classroom and get them into the teacher? Right now, it seems like the farther from a student you get as an educator, in education, the more money you make, and that's just kind of a perverse incentive to not, you know, you take the good people and promote them out of the classroom. You're not making any. So the biggest things we're going to be struggling with is teacher pay and retention, managing growth, and wisely using taxpayer dollars. Right now, there's a $60 million-plus budget, ballot initiative. I'm not going to go into that, but I'm just going to say, you know, take it with a grain of salt. Thank you.
Thank you to our candidates. Now it is time to open the questions from the audience. Will you please stand if you ask your question? I noticed last time that people had a hard time hearing one another, so if you would stand, I think people could hear a little better. So where do you want to start? Anybody have a question for your candidates? Well, then I start. I've had kids in school. Just to get you thinking, so think while I talk. I had three kids go through the school system. My oldest was academically gifted, and so by the time she was a senior, she's irritated that there wasn't more kind of advanced opportunities for her. My middle child had attendance, discipline, and academic issues, and it was hard to get him to go to school. My youngest was that carefree, happy-go-lucky that all the teachers loved and all the kids loved, and the school was a perfect fit for him. You know, he was happy every day. How can the school board, that is a tough job for teachers, to have that diversity in students and student needs. How can the school board support administrative staff and teachers to deal with the issues and with, you know, other issues that all these kids have? How can you support them? I think we'll start with Bill this time.
So this is one of those instances where it makes sense for me to answer this on my own and not just defer to, well, I'm going to let all of you decide. And as a school board member, there are going to be instances where I do have to make decisions like this. Now, just very quickly, my background is, I was a high school teacher of 17 years in the suburbs of Chicago. And the way that I would support faculty and staff is it starts by hiring good administrators. I think that, you know, of support, I think that an administrator's main role is supporting the faculty in the classrooms, dealing with all of those situations that you just mentioned. And, you know, I guess in a nutshell, with 15 seconds left, that's how I would do it, would be supporting the hiring of good administrators.
To support our teachers, good administrators definitely agree is a big thing. We need to support our teachers by putting policies in place that are, that allow them to actually effectively operate their classrooms and manage their students. And then we need to ensure enforcement of those policies. Sometimes it's really nice to write a policy and it looks really good on paper, but every policy you write sometimes is going to hurt because it's going to wind up affecting somebody that you're a friend with. But unfortunately, the thing with policy is it's, you know, cut and dry. This is what we do in this circumstance. And so the follow-through would need to take place. And once again, coming back to teacher pay and retention, if the teacher's not living, you know, living a modest lifestyle out here and living paycheck to paycheck, unfortunately, we're not supporting.
Okay, and I would just like to say that I agree with the administration part of it. We have a really good... We have a really good administration in place right now in Belgrade. And they're looking at things like this. And my role as a school board member is to support their decision. But I have to tell you this, coming from a teacher's point of view, is that the good teachers that we have are able to take all three of those kids in one classroom and handle it because they've been trained for it. But you have to have smaller class sizes to do that. And so when you have 20 kindergartners, you will have that and you can probably handle that. But when you get to eighth grade and have 28 as your cap, it gets a little more tough. And we have teachers who do this every day.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something. So my daughter, we moved, I started, grew up in California and moved to Oregon, now here in Montana. My daughter, one of my daughters, my younger one, was a teacher in Oregon. And what concerns me now, what I'm seeing in Montana, is exactly what was happening in Oregon. We keep throwing money at what we call problems with the classrooms and everything. And it doesn't get there. It doesn't get to the classrooms. And what you said about the teachers, you know, having, you know, they have three different levels or whatever, it's almost impossible for the teachers to teach well for each level. So you end up kind of teaching to the middle. The ones that need extra help suffer. And then the highly intelligent ones suffer. So what guarantees that, as we vote, bonds in, that that is actually going to go to the classroom? And as a country, we spend the most on every child in any other country in, basically in this world. And it's, and our education system is really going down the tubes. So how, how do you plan on solving that problem? I mean, again, throwing more money at these things doesn't seem to be doing the trick.
And can I clarify, just to make sure that we all understand the question? So how are, how are they going to ensure that kids need their, get their needs met? And the money that we believe is going to the students actually goes to the students?
Correct. Yes.
Is that fair? All right. And I think we started with Bill, so we're gonna go back to Walter.
Well, to answer your question, we've got to look where the money is going that's not getting into the classroom. Taxpayers, tax dollars, bonds, up here, state levies, wherever, however you wanna call it, the revenue's here, the classroom's down here. And I don't know if half of it, when I was doing some math, is getting into the classroom. So where's it going? Unfortunately, I think there's a lot of administrative bloat. We need to look at every administrator and every program and evaluate whether or not this program is relevant to our mission of keeping students safe and educating them? Or if we're starting to do things that are beyond our scope, that sound really good and are probably very benevolent, but are not the mission of a school? So, does that help?
Yep.
Okay. I'd just like to say that we talked about a bond, but a bond is not for running the school. A bond is for, a bond is for building the school. And the levies are for, for running the school. I agree that it has to come through the administration to make sure that the children are receiving the benefit. And as a taxpayer, I'm right in there with all of you in the fact that we have to have good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I think that comes through having a good administration in place. And then having a school board watching over their shoulders to make sure that it happens.
Those are both good answers. I would say, if you're gonna trust the administrators for something like this, then it has to be executed. There's something, your unique situation that you mentioned, there's something that we call differentiated instruction. All right? And there are ways to do that, where you have different levels in the classroom and there are ways to get it done properly. But it has, there has to be oversight there. I don't think the, the solution is throwing money at teachers necessarily, although in this valley, we have a unique problem where they have to be able to pay the rent. But the data does not show that higher-paid teachers equals better test scores or anything like that. So I would say, you know, let's tackle that issue together. It's something we gotta, we gotta all fight for.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? I start to remember faces from previous forums, so it's nice to see a familiar face.
Just wanted to say thanks for running, guys. There's been a lot of conversation about teachers paid. And I was a custodian in the classroom for five years. And I got the privilege of being the quiet person, as much as I'm quiet. The person that got to watch everything in the school. I had the eye, the point of view. And one of the things that I saw year after year was teachers being pulled out of the classrooms for endless meetings, for committees, and everything else. They weren't able to focus on the kids. How do we streamline it so that the teachers actually can focus on the kids, which is the reason why they're there?
Very good observation. And of course, as for, you have your professional development days where the children aren't in the school and you leave the teachers in the classroom on other days.
Bill?
All right. So, this, this might seem a little cynical, but we live in a cynical world right now. I have three kids of my own. So of course, I, in Belgrade, schools already travel. So I definitely take notice when there are meetings and, you know, development meetings and the kids are not in school, because that means myself and my wife are taking a day off of work to watch them. But, you know, as a former teacher of 17 years and being a part of a lot of these developmental meetings, it's unfortunate to say, but not a whole lot gets done. So I think there should be some reforms in that aspect. They probably don't need all of that for PD time, professional development time. And the more contact that they have with the students, let's face it, the better they're gonna do in school. It's that simple. You know, me and a colleague meeting for two hours about something while we talk about the football game and maybe get 15 minutes of work done, that's not doing any student any favors at all.
Walter?
How do we make the focus on kids? Honestly, we need to, through policy, once again, that's where the board can factor is policy. Make teachers, you know, and I hate to say make, but take the duties, a lot of these duties away, make the teachers, make these meetings that the teachers are in, that they are needed in, much shorter, much, much less frequent, and have more behind-the-scenes work on any projects that need to take place. But ultimately, the teacher's there to teach the student, not to be running the school. That's why we have the administration. Pulling, pulling teachers out of, out of the classroom is definitely not a productive solution for anything. And the vast majority of meetings can really honestly be summed up in an email anyway.
So, we all know we're in a season of belt tightening, head home, the taxes, inflation, all these other things. So, what is this, what can the school board do to have a season of tightening? I know it's not forever, but, you know, it's the time we're in right now. How can the school board tighten the belt?
Would you be able to repeat the question? Do you want me to repeat the question? He said, currently, everybody needs to tighten their belts, that economics and cost of everything is affecting all of us. What can the school board do to help tighten the belt with the new school?
I can, sure. So, first of all, we've got a, and I know the district is trying to sell it on everybody, but we've got a 60 and one-half million dollar levy, that, bond that we're trying to, to pass here. Now, this is where my unique platform might come into play and be very useful to the people of this community. Let's say, for sake of argument, that heck qua that is sitting there vacant, maybe for a third of that 60 and one-half million dollars could've been renovated and used instead of building a brand-new school. On my platform, I would've directed that question directly to you. And we might not be looking at, looking at a bond on May 7th to be voted on, because you would've told me, no, I think the heck qua school should be renovated and used instead. Good.
And I should ask, did I get your correct? Did you get your question answered? I just wanted to be sure, sorry. All right, anyone else?
Yeah, that took it.
Did I miss you guys? I must've, I must've been impressed with the answer myself.
Tightening a belt is definitely something that anytime you're tabling taxpayer dollars, you always gotta look at, whether it's a period of growth, a period of shrinkage, a period of stagnation, you always gotta look at, how can I be the best steward of other people's money? And which is what taxpayer dollars are, money that's taken from people and forcibly by the government. This goes to where we've gotta concentrate more on the actual core missions of the school, of education, in a safe environment. Not, like I said, there's a lot of stuff that's going on out there that kind of distracts and pulls money and resources away. And if, you know, taxpayers wanna look into that, that's fine. The school might not be the proper venue to do it. And so we need to just concentrate on what our mission is and not what our mission isn't. Does that make sense?
I think there's, I think there would always be waste in schools. And you've set your administration up so that they start looking at how they can make schools more effective and more efficient. And that's happening here. They're, they are looking at it. We will have to have a certain amount of money to run the school. And that money will be given to us by the taxpayers and by the state. And we just have to make sure that our administration is doing their job to, to do the most effective use of that money.
Anyone else?
Can I repeat the question?
Yeah, I can. If I can, you can.
Unless it's about time.
No, it's not about time. But we are telling you.
I just keep hearing every school district all over the state about this teachers paying salaries. As a school board, what ability do you have to change that? How can that be made better so that teachers can afford to live in Montana? I thought it was like something from hell. But why can't we have more higher salaries?
We have a process called negotiations. And this is where the teachers and the committee, the board, sits and talks about this. And so when the last negotiation session, the teachers agreed with the, the other members of the committee about what their salaries should be. And the only way that we're going to increase this is to have more money coming from somewhere or cutting programs. And that's, and that's all we can do as a school board.
Bill?
I, I would have to agree. There's, there's no, you know, collective bargaining with these unions, short of, if, if the union really wants a raise, I mean, they're gonna have to be willing to, I hate to say the S-word, but they're gonna have to be willing to strike or do something, something is gonna have to give in order for their pay to increase. Now, if the Belgrade Union is happy with the salary they're making, then that's fine. But I would say, in this particular situation with housing prices around here, I don't know how they can be happy, but I can't answer that. It's exactly like Marielle just said. There's no other way to do it.
Honestly, it is a real tough challenge to get money in there. Step one is to look at every program, every everything, and make sure that it is, like I said, essential to the mission of education and, you know, that its value is there. And try, and every, every administrator, every position, everybody that's not touching a student, sorry to Judy, every custodian, and look at everything and leave no stone unturned to see if there are savings that can be made. Collective bargaining is great. What's gonna happen is the teacher's gonna say, you know what, this is what I, what I can make here, or I can go to Wyoming and make a lot more. And rather than going on strike, they just call a U-Haul and move. And then work, we don't have an answer. We need to look legislatively and through the Montana State, Montana State School Board, but there's a, what is it? Montana Board of Public Education. And we need to work with them and the legislature and evaluate everything that they're mandating upon us and see if it's a necessary thing. And maybe it's something that we need to work with them to try and get up above to say, change this. You know, we can, we can, we can go and call up legislators, you know, we're politicians, we can find politicians to talk to. And if we're being forced to do something that doesn't make sense, we need to get that changed. We, we can't quit, but ultimately, you know, right, I mean, collective bargaining's great if, you know, you've got a striking teacher, it's one thing. If they don't strike, they just leave, that's worse. Because then they're gone. And they're working somewhere else. And you can't get them back.
All right, just give me your answer. Go ahead.
So I have a question about the collection, the union. I'm in the same union with all the teachers. I'm a librarian at a public library. And they're considering some lawsuit that, again...
Can you send it?
Oh, sure.
People can even behind you here.
Everybody. The teachers' union sued the state to get the proper funding that they needed to have. That somehow it was a violation of the Constitution. I didn't quite follow it. Was ruled on recently in a few, I followed it, but I didn't quite understand it. And I think they, the ruling came about two years ago. And so statewide, it had to do with the number of levies that could be administered. Does anybody know what I'm talking about here? Correct. So they're considering suing again because the funding isn't correct according to the teachers' union. There's an obligation in the Constitution that they're not needing, and they don't know any other remedy than to sue. So they're considering suing again. But if nobody knows about this, we can't.
All getting a chance.
Who is suing?
MFPE, the teachers' union. And they sued before.
We'll start with Walter, 10 years ago.
And it took forever.
2010.
It's the equalization funding. That's what it is, right? Here goes it. It's the equalization funding thing. And it came out pretty good for education, but it took forever.
I actually, I actually was on, if it's the one I'm thinking you're referring to, I actually was a state employee back when that took place. It was more than 10 years ago, because it was when I worked at Montana State Prison, which was '05 to '08, to put it in a timeframe. And I was a state employee. I was actually a member of MEA-MFT, which is now MFPE. So, and it wound up getting kind of ugly because our union actually sued to take pay raises from us and it got...
to take pay raises from us, and it got really ugly, but if that's the lawsuit I believe you're referring to, you know, I don't want to get into a lawsuit situation. Montana Constitution guarantees a, the word quality education is in there, I can't, don't quote me on it, but we are guaranteed, our students, a quality education. Problem is, the word quality is, you know, vague, and so if, you know, schools start, funding starts dwindling, they kind of can't have that option of dragging the legislature to court, and I don't know exactly how that works, but I don't want to wind up in that situation. I think we need to be proactive and look for funding before we wind up litigating it in court, because every penny we spend in a courtroom is a penny we're still not spending in school.
I'll have to get back to you on that, because I think that's the quality education coalition that did that suing, which is five members, five organizations from Helen that represent all of us, but I would have to get back to you on that one.
Well, I'll tell you right now, if, I'll have to get back to you on that one, it's good enough for Mary Ellen Fitzgerald. I'll take a pass.
I'm just, I'm DeeDee Fratton, I'm the superintendent. Probably every state in our country has gone through a lawsuit in the past maybe thirty or thirty-five years to talk about having fun schools, right? Schools are very expensive, they're a huge part of anybody's taxes in any state that you live in, and so, you know, things get resolved in the courts, and so, I've worked in four different states in my thirty-four years in education, and there have been lawsuits in every state. So that happened, I don't know, sorry, it's twenty-ten-ish, and so then, now there's a rule that every ten years, the legislature goes back and looks at school funding to say, how are we doing now? So we're actually up for that ten-year review next year, and that's an opportunity to say, the decisions that were made ten years ago worked then, and since then, look how our world has changed, is our funding system still adequate, or do we need to look at that and change it? And I think there, you know, there are going to be lots of committees that work on that, lots of thinkers, people looking at what other states are doing, people looking at, you know, how we can address the teacher pay issue. It's a challenge in small communities because it's hard to get people to live there, and it's a challenge in the bigger communities, where it's just too expensive to live. So all those things, it's good, I mean, right, Montana is doing a good job by looking at that every ten years, hopefully, I can keep us from having to go back to court to make decisions, so.
All right, we're getting towards the end, but anybody else?
Unfortunately, we're living in a time where a lot of school boards are having to be involved in book bans and access to information for students, as there seems to be a concerted effort in this country to take certain types of literature and certain access to databases and information out of schools. If you're on the school board, it's likely that this is going to come up and be something that you have to deal with. I just want to know what your position is on freedom to read and students' access to information, and what you would do as a school board member if faced with that situation here in Belgrade where someone was trying to ban books from the classroom or deny access to database information in school libraries or English classes or something like that.
This is going to be a group decision, though.
Actually, let's start, we skipped, you looked at Walter last time, so...
You could go ahead.
You only get that one.
Okay.
So this would be where the Bill Fraser platform would shine. While these decisions would be made by a committee, because, you know, books and literature, you know, are we talking about what Playboy magazine, who knows? Okay, these things have to be decided by a committee. However, once we do know what the particular literature is, I would put forth, push it back to the community. Do you feel that this is appropriate for students of Belgrade forty-four to view and read? If yes, I'm happy to carry that vote to the board. If no, I'm also happy to carry that vote to the board.
So, I don't think the phrase "book ban" is an appropriate phrase or an accurate phrase to describe what we're doing. The school is not obligated to provide materials or to use materials in a curriculum that may be offensive to some people. We can find other materials that are neutral. If parents wish to expose their children to these materials, so long as it's not a violation of federal law, that is a parent and child decision. But if another parent opts to keep their student out of, away from that material for their values, I don't see why unless you make a really strong argument that that material is, has, that specific material has a value to the education, that the school should be in the business of providing it. There are other avenues to get it, but I don't think the school should be obligated to be the provider of that material.
Okay, and I just want to say that as one board member, I have absolutely no power. This is going to be a board decision, and so the board, as a group, will have to have a hearing with parents and have the parents come in, and then as a group, we decide. So it will all just depend upon the circumstance, how I would vote. Anything burning we could, if not, we're out, we're simple, we're pretty much out of time, but if there's one more burning question, we can do it.
So I was wondering about what your views on like sports art?
Okay. On sports, sorry, he's wondering what your view on school sports. How, should I say, how the school board will support them, would they think they should spend more or less?
What your views on school sports are in general?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What your views on school sports are in general?
Okay, what your view are? I think that school sports are very, very essential to the growth of the child, just like drama, just like library club, just like math club, sports are important, and I wholeheartedly endorse that, and you know that Belgrade nineteen sixteen had the very first track meet for all grades in here because our facilities were so great.
Were you there?
All right, we're going to...
I don't feel so bad now. School sports are essential, I, as I said before, I have three kids in Belgrade schools. My daughter is a freshman at the high school and is a lady panther on the softball team, and they are kicking butt, but I also have a, my middle son, who you throw him a ball and he doesn't know what to do with it, and there are many kids like that, but he excels in trombone. So, school sports are great for certain people, other clubs and activities are great for other people. So I guess, that answered your question? Yeah, fair enough.
Coming from the position of a fat kid with a bad heart, I was not the one that was going to be playing football out there, but as extracurriculars as a whole, I'm going to tell you that they are part of a complete education. I was the FFA kid. I went to Louisville, Kentucky for, if you believe it, flower arranging. The other kids got to go for mechanics and loading, but, you know, that's, I was an FFA. That was a major part of my education. I know people that FCC LA, athletics, band, you know, all these things are a component of education, and if you strip them away, you would strip a major part of the development of our youth out in education, and I don't think that that's worthwhile, I think that, you say sports, and I'm going to stretch it out to extracurriculars, because it fits multiple different students that way, I think they're important. Does that answer your question?
Yes. All right, let's have a round of applause for... We spent a few, put themselves out there to run for an office, and we couldn't have our community to thousand.
Did they get a closing statement?
No. Because I know how to do this, but you do each get two minutes, you started earlier.
You get two minutes for the closing statement.
I think I just went, so...
All right, reflecting back on my years on the board, I first ran on the board without having an agenda. Many times, board members try to get on because they have a certain agenda. I don't, I didn't think I ever had an agenda, but I did. So I thought we should purchase land for schools to be built, because we've never had any land before. We have accomplished that. Having a board that plans ahead and not reacting to everything but planning ahead, we now have a board that does that. Being a governing board and not a board that's organizational, without micromanaging the school, we are now that kind of a board. So the fourth thing that I thought about was that building a school system that is comfortable or exceeds the best in the state. Our children deserve the very best education delivered in the safest and the most progressive district. We have not reached that yet, and I would like to be on the board for one more year to help get us there. So, I would like to be part of the team in the school that exceed, so that we have a school system that exceeds the best in the state and gives our children the very best education that we can give them, and it's all children, whatever their future holds for them. It's going to be a completely different world for these kids, and we have to prepare them to be good citizens. All right, I received my ballot today, probably many of you did too, and so I ask you to give, I ask you to give me the chance to serve one more year to help our district provide a quality education for each child to make him or her ready to be a responsible citizen of our community.
So I'll just hold the applause down here.
So, I realize that this is probably, you all are coming from a place in the dark with what I'm actually trying to do here. I had hoped that some of the newspaper articles would have come out by the time this forum happened, so that we would have some questions about the mechanics, and there's a lot of moving parts in what I'm trying to do. It's very simple, but there are a lot of moving parts. But I want to thank you all for coming today. There is no apathy in this room tonight, okay? You're all here for a reason, and I applaud that. If the whole of America were as tenacious as you all are, that would solve a whole lot of our problems, but unfortunately, that's not the case. In closing, I'm going to ask you to say yes. I'm going to ask you to say yes to trying something different than what's up here. Trying something different. I'm going to ask you to say yes to reshaping politics in the United States of America. I'm going to ask you to say yes, and this is important, to accepting the responsibility yourselves to have that decision-making power in your hands on policy during the entire length of my term. Now, your decision is pretty simple, Walter is, Walter is, Walter's running against two other gentlemen, they're not here tonight, on the ballot, separate section, you're going to see Mary Ellen and myself. Now, you vote for Mary Ellen, you're getting exactly that. She's spectacular, she has a wealth of knowledge, she's been in the business for a long time. If you vote for me, when you vote for me, you're not voting for Bill Fraser, you're voting for this thing called the Fraser Platform, okay? It's a vote essentially for yourselves, so that you retain that power of decision and don't give it to a politician, someone who are trying to ruin our lives, right? It's changed the way we do politics in America. Thank you for coming.
I want to thank you, everybody, for their time here and for giving us this opportunity. Thanks to the lead women voters, Belgrade Library, and I'm sure I'm missing a few of them.
And whoever else.
And whoever else. Mary Ellen, I gave you a hard time over there, but I have nothing but the utmost respect for you. You have been on the school board and brought a massive amount of experience and knowledge to it, thank you. Bill, it's been awesome to hear your views on things and how you would, a little bit different style of governance, but it's an interesting one, and I'll have to think about it. Now, that being said, they are one race, and I am two others, Rocky and Frank, Rocky and Frank are another race, and I would ask that you would at least consider me and flip a coin for the other two. That being said, I just want to make sure that Belgrade schools remain to be the strongest schools that we could possibly be and take care of, or, you know, ensure that our kids have the best future. So, if you have any questions for me, I do have door hangers over there, you know, I asked you, you know, if you want, take them home, spread them out, do something, give them to your neighbors, friends, tell them, hey, don't vote for this guy, he's an idiot. It's up to you. I'll be around for at least another half hour if anybody's got any questions for me.
Thank you all for coming. But then we are going to take just a really short break to give the school time for these guys to make room for the school district.